Commission meeting. Today's Monday, March 25th. Oh, my mom's birthday. 2024. The time is now 10:00 a.m. Please call the roll. I mean, now 10:03. Call the roll.
Commissioner Cagiano?
Present.
Commissioner Simone?
Here.
Commissioner Osorio?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Here.
Mayor Rizano?
Here. Please rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. [INAUDIBLE] Okay. Our first item in business is number one, a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, David. Tulsa City Attorney Resolution is item 1A. This is a resolution of the City of Margate, Florida approving the separation agreement between Joseph Galaski and the City of Margate, Florida, providing for retirement benefits, providing for an effective date. This resolution is before you for your consideration.
What is it, which other board?
Motion to approve.
A second for a quick discussion.
All right.
I had a question for the city attorney. As part of this separation agreement, is this similar to a few we've done recently where there's a release of liability in there?
Yes.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Public. Call the roll.
Commissioner Cagiano?
Yes.
Commissioner Simone?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Rizano?
Yes. Okay, being that is the only item up here, I'm going to open this up for a little bit for, I guess now then we're going to have to pick a new chief?
Yes, sir. It would be appropriate for the...
Probably should have had that on here. Apologize.
Correct. It would be appropriate for the commission to select an interim chief.
Okay. Is there any names, anybody related to intern?
I'd like to make a motion to insert the name Mike Palmer, Major Mike Palmer.
Mike Palmer.
Second.
Second. Discussion, Commissioner Osorio.
Oh, sorry. I was going to mention the same name.
Is it appropriate to discuss now the powers that such person would have or do we wait till afterwards?
Is it what? Which is it?
I asked whether or not I could discuss some of the powers that...
You mean the job description? Sure. Now's the best time than ever.
Correct. So I need a guest to ask the attorney because I have a copy of the job description in front of me. What meaningful change a person can make based on a union contract?
Well...
You want me to break that more for you?
I'm sure that somebody can make meaningful change notwithstanding the existence of union contracts. You know, and then it also depends on what kind of change you're talking about.
Well, for example, the words negotiated departure came up when I was reading something. And I didn't know if something like that was in the contract or not because I'd like to think that the person we give this job to and then the person who may get that job permanently has the opportunity to do what was mentioned about clean house if it's necessary. So I don't know if this is the appropriate time to have that conversation, but I would like to think that the person taking this job now would feel that he has the opportunity to make change or else we're just wasting everyone's time.
If I might? I agree. I think that the new chief should be able to, interim chief should be able to...
I need to ask.
All the changes they need to make.
If I might, I think those questions are best put towards the person that you appoint as interim chief. So if you vote on that motion now and then ask those questions, I think that would be appropriate.
And I was just going to add on, I believe we're still going to review some of the incidents based on the last meeting. We still approved the continued investigation or report. I mean, you know, the mayor brought up some, even though we were disagreement on a couple of things, he brought up some really good points as far as us as policymakers, based on the review that's going to come back. There's still some policies that we can work with the new chief to change that are outside of union contracts that might prevent some of these perceptions of these certain behaviors in the future. And that's to our purview, for sure.
And I will win.
So, and I'll just add that as interim chief, the interim chief will be expected to carry out the duties as a regular chief. And that is, you know, hiring, firing, discipline, well, hiring, firing falls within me, but, you know, disciplinary matters, organizational updates, changes, recommendations of those type of things. I expect interim chief to carry those out as if he or she were chief in consultation with myself and certainly keep you all apprised of anything that comes about regarding that.
Well, that's exactly what I wanted to hear.
All right. I just have a couple of questions. As far as I'm going by the succession plan, is right after chief, we have our majors, is that correct? Okay, the majors can only be chosen from within, is that correct?
Yes, they are selected from the captains and lieutenants.
And they're not bound by the union, right?
So it's kind of a unique situation. So lieutenants and captains are covered by union agreement. The majors are appointed by the chief from lieutenants and captains. If they are removed from the major position, they fall back to their previously held position.
The chief can make that decision?
Chief can make that decision with my approval, yes.
So the decision to, for the majors to go back to, and after that is captains, you're saying?
It would be their previously held position, whether that be a lieutenant or a captain.
And how many captains do we have?
We don't have any captains.
Mike Palmer was the only captain that was appointed to major.
So in the, if you look under our budget, do we have an open position for a captain?
No.
They'd go back to being lieutenants because they would have to.
Right.
Because they were never anything beyond that.
So of the three majors, one of them was formerly a captain, two of them were formerly lieutenants.
Correct.
Okay. So as far as the majors, who put the wording in there that says they're allowed to go back to lieutenant?
So that is...
We were asked to put that in.
Right.
We were asked to put that in.
So the commission...
I know every answer I'm asking, I just want clarification. You'll see where I'm going with it.
Oh, I know where you're going.
Okay.
I'm not sure I understand it. So the major positions were created and brought before the commission with that language in there?
Correct. Okay, so suggested by the police department?
My memory serves me correct, yes, that would have been something that was suggested or recommended by the police department to be put in there.
But it wasn't bargained for.
No.
No.
Because I know where you're going. Okay.
So if we wanted to make it where the majors were not allowed to go back, how do we do that?
We'll have to look at, I don't recall if the majors are referenced in the lieutenants and captains bargaining agreement or not. I believe it was a discussion with the union at the time.
Now I'm confused.
Right, and I am too because I wasn't prepared for this.
Okay.
So I'll have to look into it. But I believe if you all wanted it so the majors could not go back to lieutenants and captains, one, we would have to look at the resolution we passed and amend those positions. And then, two, possibly negotiate with the union regarding those positions.
Okay. Is that something you guys would want to look into? The reason why is because I'm going to be talking to the interim chief about this and stuff we've made in the last year, changes. I don't think we're the betterment of looking back at it. I don't think it was done right, so.
I don't want to make any changes until I hear what your issues are and then deem whether or not they're worthy to make those changes.
If you want to hear my issues, I'm going to tell you my issues. I think Mike coming in...
Yeah, I can't give you carte blanche to do whatever you feel you want to do.
You just asked me for my... Okay. Commissioner Simone?
I think we should leave it up to the interim chief of what's best for the department.
I'd do 100%, but I see in this system that we have, if, I talked to Mike about this, he's going to come in here, he's going to want to do some things. His hands are tied, totally tied. If we were to look at this to give him some flexibility, number one being with the majors, number two, possibly getting a deputy chief to groom them to become the next chief. Right now, he can only deal with what he has. So Mike, I'll talk to you more about it. And if you have any suggestions or any other ways you think that we can get to where we need to get quicker, better, smoother, but right now, I kind of see this as just going to be, you're going to be the new guy. Clicks are going to be there. You don't do what the clicks do, unions are going to be there, and I don't want that. I really don't want that. And he's on an island by himself. And I think that if he had a team of an assistant of three majors that were part of this team, you wouldn't get this loosey goosey stuff going around with all these other people coming up pushing and driving in a way that was done last time to basically call for no confidence vote. I think if you got great leadership at top, the bottom's going to be happy. I think what happened was the leader, not only that, I don't know if you guys knew this, but when they were asked to do a no confidence vote on the chief, majority of them wanted them to do it on the whole command staff. It wasn't just the chief. Majority wanted the whole command staff revamped. So with that being said, this right here, if we were to amend this, change it in any way, it would give him more flexibility. But right now, if he goes in there and starts doing things, it's going to look like retaliation. It's just going to happen. So we have to give him tools to work. Without the tools, we're going to be in the same boat.
But no matter, no matter what he does, if, if he does the same thing with the change versus without the change, it's still going to look like that, but who cares? What we need is to write, to write it, whatever policy you want to have. Because yes, you're right, there's going to be clicks there no matter what happens. So I agree with you on that. I agree with you, the chief needs to make whatever changes he believes needs to be made. I agree with you on that, too. I think one of the selling points for becoming a major for the captains and the lieutenants was the ability that if it didn't work out, they can go back because if they didn't want to take the shot of being out of the union and then possibly get fired and then have no recourse, you may make that pool of people who want to become a major much smaller because you're not giving them the opportunity if they don't succeed, they're gone, as opposed to if they don't succeed, they can fall back. So I would like the chief to be able to decide what he would prefer to have, and I think he should have some time to think about it before he is pigeonholed into doing, making a decision right this moment before sitting down in that big chair and thinking about it.
Right. I think that was, when the major positions were created, that was a concern of the candidates for majors.
Correct.
That they would then become at will. It would no longer have...
Correct.
So they wanted to keep it in place so they could fall back to their previously held position and still have, you know, job protection or, you know, union protection for something.
And it may not even be that they do something wrong. It could be that a chief comes in and after a couple of years...
Correct.
Because chiefs don't usually stay more than a few years. They leave, a new chief comes in and wants to move people around just because, but, I mean, I'm open to it, Mayor. I'm open to it. I'd like to hear from the chief, not now, but maybe after a couple of weeks in there and see what changes he recommends. I think ultimately...
Antonio, what changes he recommends and what obstacles he has to making them, I think that's just as important.
Correct. I think ultimately, and I've been clear about this, I would like to ultimately see a chief from the outside come in. I think as long as someone from the inside is here, you're always going to have...
I agree.
The blame blame of clicks, it doesn't matter who it is. So ultimately, I think that'll go away once we have an outside chief. But I want to make sure that the interim chief is set up for success. And if the reports come back and he comes back and makes recommendations, I would certainly look at changing how the majors are brought in or removed. My only concern is that if they're at will, that we may not have anyone that wants to take those positions. That's my only concern, but, you know, I keep an open mind about it.
That's my concern also.
All right. Commissioner Simone?
At 100%, we need to go outside and look for a chief. It's a no-brainer to me.
And I just want to be clear on something. I think we have great men and women. I think Palmer absolutely is going to do a good job. I think there's other people within the department that could be a good chief, but I just feel with the stigma and what's going on over the last few years, whoever we put there permanently, I just think that we're asking for trouble. That's why I want to go outside. It's not to say that there's people here that can't do the job, but I just want to get rid of that perception of clicks or favoritism.
All right. And I just want to say this, and if we do get somebody... Go ahead, Arlene.
No, go ahead. I just want to see if my number ever came up.
If we do wind up getting somebody in here, I would love to see the positions of the majors include people from the outside.
You mean give the chief the opportunity to bring in his own majors? I wouldn't be opposed to that either.
The question is, as always, are you going to fund it? Because unless you're going to...
Same way you're funding it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, the budget's there for the position.
No, no, but you still, but you still have the ones that are there now.
Well, they would go back to lieutenant.
They would go back now. You're absolutely right, they go back. But then everybody else above them is going to go back. So if you're going to have more people, you're going to have to hire new people. New people is new money.
Right. Commissioner Cagiano is correct. So right now, we have majors filled by in-house people. If we were to look at bringing in outside folks for that position, those majors would go back to their previously held, taking up those, you know, personnel spots. And then if we wanted to bring in a major or assistant chief or deputy chief...
We have to rebudge you.
You're adding positions to do so.
I wouldn't be opposed to that. You know, sometimes you've got to pay to get quality.
I just want to...
I know that, hold on one second, I know that we only have the power to hire, fire, and suspend the police chief. So technically, the chief could bring in whoever he wants. I just would like to have some sort of say. If we're going to bring in majors from the outside, I think that we should be able to just be part of the discussion on that. But I would be open if we have to come up with additional funds to bring majors in from the outside, I would, I would be fine with that.
And I also think, you know, myself and, you know, assuming interim chief Palmer, if the commission votes that way, we're hearing the conversation here. You know, it's something that he and I can discuss. You know, there may be an opportunity if we have vacant officer positions that we don't need to add all of the positions back. If you're dropping lieutenants down, you know, they can, you know, be a part of that force and whatnot. So it's something that he and I will get together and talk about if, if that's the wish of this board, is to see, you know, quick organizational change in the interim by adding positions, reducing positions, making those changes. Or if you all want to wait until we get a permanent chief in place to make those recommendations and whatnot as well, but...
Kell, I'd rather do it now. Now, the only reason, because if we do go out for a search, they're probably going to ask, am I going to be able to bring people with me? And if you tell them no, it's kind of like, some might not even consider. I mean, they're going to want to bring their team with them. Just the way I look at it.
Okay.
So you're suggesting that we set up the structure to allow a new chief to bring someone, majors in from the outside, but don't execute it until we find the new chief?
Correct.
Yeah.
I think that'd be fair for everybody.
I think that's the best way.
Vice Mayor, do you want to go?
Since everyone's discussing the next step, I made it really clear, there is no one within this department that I would promote into that permanent position for obvious reasons. Excuse me. When people become principals, they get out of the BTU or whoever union they're in, and they become annually contracted. And in April, they sit and they wait for the letter to say they've been reappointed. That's a calculated risk you take to move up. Nobody says to you, if you don't like it, you can go back, although I'm sure they can. However, when I talked about negotiated departure, I'm also talking about such things as with cause. Right now, we have a very toxic environment, and I would ask the new interim chief if he felt afterwards like saying something, if there was something he had in mind. There is no doubt in my mind that nobody's going to wake up today and say, gee, there was a problem. Everybody knows there was a problem. There's been a problem for a long time. There either need to be tools to fix it, and if it means that some of the problem steps back and winds up with more protection than they have now, then we haven't done anything for the problem except embedded it. So I think we need to talk about what we do with the majors because the whole idea was to give the person who was chief a group of people they could rely on, talk to, and not have to worry about every thought running back to the union. Same reason the fire department, that their division, whichever the name is for that is out of the union, the division. So, you know, there can't be, if there's a problem in your position as a major, it rises to the level other than you're not comfortable, it's not what you thought it was going to be. But if it rises to the level that it's toxic, then there needs to be an out clause for us as well as the department, or all you're doing is shifting around the marbles in the bag. And that's, hadn't worked well the last couple of years, apparently. So there needs to be something where you just don't keep a problem, where somebody who thinks that this is, you know, a cushiony job for the next 30 years because of the union backing. So whatever that takes to do, we need to modify that because otherwise, nothing changes except the title. And again, if after we vote or during this vote, the possible new acting chief would like to get up and say something, I'd love to hear it, but that's up to him. Thank you.
Maybe Kell or city manager, this appointment, structurally and financially, how does it work?
So in terms of structure, he just assumes, you know, interim chief role and has all the duties and powers and roles of the chief.
Okay.
Financially, when somebody is placed into an interim capacity of a position higher from where they're at and taking on additional responsibilities, we normally provide, there's a 10% additional responsibilities that's added to their, whatever their current base salary is now.
Can you remember, do you know what the chief was making?
Chief Galaski?
Yeah.
He was making 183,855.
And do you know what, right now, major Palmer, interim chief Palmer's making?
I prepared for this, yes. He was, he's making 162,843.
So if you go 15%... Of 10% or 15%?
By the 10%...
It's a 16,000?
It's pretty close to where he...
Bring it to 179,127.
179?
Yeah.
Can we just put him at the same number the chief was making?
That's at your discretion, so.
I would leave it at, I would leave it at the 10, but whatever you want.
I think he's, I think he's taking a shot and a risk to do this, and I think that he should be compensated for, no more than what the current chief was making, but I have no problem paying him what the current chief was making.
All right, I guess I'll go down the line. Anton, are you okay with that?
I have no problem with that.
Okay with, to just be clear, we're okay with putting him at, your question to Commissioner Cagiano is...
Is 183,855.
Okay. All right, thank you. Just need to end the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Simone?
I'm fine with that.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Okay.
And yes. Okay, so before we go on, you want an amendment, David?
Yeah, so Commissioner Cagiano made the original motion, so if he wants to amend the motion to appoint Mike Palmer as interim chief at the proposed salary of 183,855.
All right. I'll amend it to, again, stay with Major Palmer to be the new chief, interim chief, new chief, and him to get the 183,855.
And I was the second, so I'll second that.
No, Simone was the second, actually.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Call the roll. Public? Call the roll.
Commissioner Cagiano?
Yes.
Commissioner Simone?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Rizano?
Yes. Okay, so financially, Mike, you'll be making the same as the chief. You're basically going to be entitled to do as the chief did. We'll try to help you. If you come up with tools for us that you think will work with the city manager, let us know. Anything else you guys want to hit on or...
I just want him to not be fearful of making changes that he feels unnecessary.
Yeah, I don't think...
I don't want him to be fearful at all. I want him to know that we're going to back him because if he's got to break some eggs to break clicks, if he's got to break some eggs to get people to work together. Look, as I say it all the time, I want people in the city, they run to our police, not from them, and I'll be damned if I have the police running from the police. He's got to break the eggs to get this department whole. Whatever it takes, if he feels he has to tell us in advance what's doing so that we don't all of a sudden have somebody running to us from the outside saying, oh, look what the chief did to us, I'd like to know, just so that we're all on the same page because he's got some heavy lifting to do. And I want to make sure he has us, he knows that he has all of our support for it.
Is there anything you'd like to say?
I'd like to.
Please.
Interim Chief Michael Palmer, I just want to say thank you for your support and confidence in me. You'll get the best from me every single day. And I will tell you this, the status quo is completely unacceptable, and it's not going to be status quo. There will be changes made. Of course, I'm going to communicate that with the city manager as well as all of you, but I don't want to rehash with everything we've been through. I don't think it's healthy, but I heard you loud and clear, and I know that change has to happen. And I'm going to make it happen. And that's why I stepped up to take this responsibility. I didn't have to do it, but Margate has been very good to me for the past 29 years, and I deserve to give back to the city, and I'm prepared to do that.
Go again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Cheers.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Lots of ribbons there.
All right. Any other commissioners have any comments?
Do we need to, oh, sorry. Do we need to discuss going for outside right now or...
We can touch on that if you guys want real quick, that's fine.
Yeah, I kind of wanted to get an idea of next steps as well. Seems like there's a consensus to go outside, but is there any recommendations Kell has? I mean, I know personally, I would, I know in some positions, we got rid of using a recruiter. I think for a position like this, that we should find a recruiter that specializes in hiring first responder, you know, high-ranking positions. I don't want to use, and I'm not going to mention the name of the former recruiter, I do not want to use her, and I don't want to pay a recruiter 90% upfront before they actually produce. But I do think that we should hire a firm to at least do the initial, you know, surveying and bringing candidates to us.
I also think it needs to be nationwide.
I disagree with that. I think it needs to be statewide because I've been told that, at least in the state of Florida, everyone has a love, understands certain rules that they don't do in New York, Tennessee, or anywhere else. So I think it needs to be statewide, and quite frankly, I would not just, I would certainly not focus just on Broward County. But I think state, not necessarily nation.
Yeah, I agree with that, Commissioner Schwartz. The policing styles are different state to state. Look, if we have a bad pool, then I wouldn't mind going broader, but for the immediate, I would say statewide with a preference outside the county.
Oh, absolutely.
That's what I said.
No, no, no. I think the basis of understanding should be outside.
Unless there's a jewel somewhere that, you know...
I'm not saying no.
No, I'm just simply saying...
I'm just saying, if there's candidates listening...
Correct.
You know. The, the policing styles are different state to state. Look, if, if we have a bad pool, then I wouldn't mind going broader. But for the immediate, I would say statewide, with a preference outside the county.
Oh, absolutely.
That's what I said.
No, no, no. I think the basis of understanding should be outside.
Unless there's a jewel somewhere that, you know.
I'm not saying no.
No, I'm just simply saying.
If there's candidates listening.
Correct.
You know.
But if you're necessarily having a problem in your department, probably not a good idea to come here.
And I also, one more thing, just in case applicants are listening, I want someone who's either been a sheriff or a current police chief, or has been a police chief in the past. I don't want this to be a, a learning ground for someone, you know. I know people got to start somewhere, but I really would prefer to not bring in a captain or something like that. I, I would like to bring in someone that has been a chief before and knows what, what needs to be done from day one. But I'll leave that for when I interview candidates. But that's just kind of my thought.
Mike, go ahead.
Out of curiosity, does HR go out and try and find someone like that for us? Because I'm kind of curious as to what, during all of this process, HR's part is or is not.
HR will, will play a role in it, but certainly for a position of, of chief, I would recommend be, use a recruiter to target specific areas, you know, do a lot of the screening for us, you know, tailor a marketing brochure specific to that position. I think it would be highly beneficial to do that and not just go through our standard hiring practice.
I didn't actually mean that. Do we then go and interview the people who might apply for that recruiter position?
So, I mean, it, it's a position that is a hire and fire by the commission. I would imagine one or all of you would want to be a part of that. If all of you are part of it, it's, it becomes more of a, a public setting. If one of you becomes kind of the liaison for the commission, then it's more of an individual type of interview. Or you guys can have individual interviews and then come back with, with your recommendations. We've been down this path before, and, and it's, it sometimes gets, you know, a little difficult in, in that manner, trying to, you know, come to a consensus on, on an individual person. But I think those details of, of, once we start getting candidates, we can start to identify how we want to interview the candidates.
I'm still talking about the recruiter, you're still talking about?
Oh, you're talking about recruiter? I'm talking about future chief.
I know, you and I are not on the same page here.
Excuse me?
I just wanted to know of how we go about finding a recruiter, as to whether we choose that, not to the next part, I'm to the first part.
Got it. If, I can probably very easily bring you back at least three different recruiters for you to look at their, their services and their history.
That was the question.
Got it, okay. Sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Simone?
And who puts together the job description?
The job description's already, you know, established.
I think we need a copy.
We can provide you all with the copies of the job description. The marketing brochure, or whatever that is that the recruiter does, will be something that, that they put together based on information from, from the city. And we'll get input from you all as to certain qualities or qualifications that you're specifically looking for, that are above and beyond what the, the job description calls for. Or preferences, you know, for example, you could do a nationwide search, but, you know, have a preference in there given to state of Florida experience type of thing. So that way, you're, you're kind of covering, you know, you're, you're not losing out on a, you know, rock star candidate from Texas or, or something, but, you know, you're, you're still keeping your, your preference in there for Florida if you chose to.
Thank you.
And I'll ask just one question, because I don't think any of us have ever seen or had any input into any, into the job description for that. I don't think I've ever seen it, and I think maybe there are certain things that need to be tweaked for those people that we have say about. So I would say, if there are things we want to change, things we want to include, stuff that hasn't been updated in 20 years, this would be the time to do it.
Okay, can provide you with a copy of the job description for chief police.
And I'd get the input from the interim chief as well, as to that process.
Chief, you're probably looking at us right now saying, wow, these guys support me, they vote for me, and now they're already looking for a new chief. No offense against us, we love you, but this is the way it has to be done. We just can't go in the back room and sit there and talk. So this is total transparency here, you know. I think you're going to do a fine job. I think we all think you're going to do a fine job. The future, I don't know if your future is to be here and remain here for those few years, I don't know. There were talks, you know, I heard of a guy named Al Amberty, he wanted to apply for this position. He said he would love to come here. I think that if you grab the horns, you start going with it, you're probably going to set it up best for anybody. So it's just a name that's going to, that, that was thrown out. But KAL, going back to the recruiter, that, that costs money?
Yes.
So maybe, maybe when it comes to the time where Mike feels that, you know, he's got things going, maybe it's time for chief, maybe possibly doing an interview with Al Amberty. He's, he's familiar with the county, he's up in Pensacola now. He's, he's had, what, employees of over 3,000 employees? You know, I think he could be the one that could come in here and basically tighten things up as well with Mike and put us back in, in a good shape. And put a succession plan in play, because I think that's the problem. Whenever you have a, well, I look at it as a business or whatever, you have to have a succession plan. Right now, I do not see a succession plan in this department. I see Mike, and that's it, to be honest with you.
Well, what we see now is a lot of backbiting.
So I think between Mike, the people, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So my belief as the interim chief is, like I said, this is not status quo. This is, my job is to make it better for a transitional, an ease transitional, whoever that person permanently may be. So I just want you to know that it's not my job just to keep everything steady, it's my job to make this better for the other person. And I hope to work with that person. Hopefully, you know, it's recognized that I'm going to put forth the best effort possible and that I work with the other person, because I think that's a key component, is that I'm part of that process to bring in that person, because that person doesn't really know everybody here in Margate. And I think it's important that I'm part of that process. I just wanted to get that out there.
Mike, I think that's great. The way I kind of look at it is you here now, when the time has come, we get another, the chief in here, come up with a budget amendment to put in an assistant chief, which you can go back to that role. You, the chief, you, you determine your three captains, or corporals, or whatever, the majors. Those majors could possibly be chosen outside or within, changes are made, I have no problem with that. But that'll establish a good team right there. And that's the way I look at it, and that's the direction I'd hope we'd go into, because as of, you know, last week, if we were to sit here and make you interim, and given what you've got and going by the policy we have, I think we're setting you up for failure. You need as many options as you can. I think starting with the corporals would be good, and I think going to, to an interim chief, an assistant chief would be a move, too. So that, that's the way I look at it.
It will probably take you up to budget time anyhow for all of this to be in place, because nothing moves fast in government.
No. So Mike, like we said, if you need anything, please talk to KAL.
Yes, that's right.
I absolutely will, and I, obviously, I did watch the meeting previously, and there's
one thing about, you talked about policy change. My opinion is that we definitely need to bring the civil service board back into the mix.
Amen.
And I would ask that you please do that sooner than later.
Much of what was a problem might have been solved had it been gone through a civil service.
Correct.
Years ago, they were, they were extraordinarily powerful. So I, I absolutely agree with you.
So Mike, based on the discussion, are we maybe suggesting that we wait for a report? Let's see what's going on, let's get input from our interim chief? So maybe, maybe we wait on a recruiter for a few weeks until we get a hold of what exactly is going on, what exactly we're looking for? I, I've heard that there are maybe some hidden gems out there. I heard a name today, Mr. Lombardi. I mean, if that's something we want to go eventually and not asking for any decisions now, maybe, maybe that person comes in as the deputy chief under Palmer for six months till they get everything under control, and then Palmer goes to, back to deputy chief and that person takes over. But what I'm getting at is, are we, should we wait a few weeks to have, to bring in a recruiter and start that process in case we do find someone?
I think it's going to take a few weeks to find a recruiter anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I can, in the interim, I can get proposals from recruiters and just see where we're at.
Right, get the proposals, and then we just won't hire, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Anybody, any other questions up here from anybody? No? Anybody from public, like to wish our new chief good luck?
Julie Jones.
You're the first one, Julie.
First of all, I'd like to congratulately, I know Mike, I've worked with him on a couple of cases here or there, you know, he's a great guy. I, I just had a suggestion, and I know I'm just a dumb old lady, but let's just pretend you have three candidates for police chief.